Mr. Mushak?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
Ms. Jordan Byron?
Present.
Ms. Tabachnik?
Here.
Mr. Patches? You've got your hands full. I see you there.
Yes.
Ms. Wells?
Here.
Mr. Bryce?
Present.
Ms. Langallis?
Here.
Mr. Cantor?
Here.
Mr. Rowena?
Here.
And Mr. Schollman?
Here. Let's see, do we have the full commission or are we missing someone? Looks to me like everyone is here.
Yep.
So, let's do this. For the first item, I'll seat Mr. Patches. For the second item, which is B, I'll I'll seat Ms. Tabachnik. And for the third item, I will seat Mr. Bryce. And let's see where we are when it comes to the public hearing. Okay, with that, the first item is 2023-60. Let me, I guess I ought to get this on the record regarding the Hernandez public hearing. On our written agendas, not as far as I know, not on the published agenda, but on the written agendas, it indicated that the meeting this evening was going to be a hybrid. As a result, there is the possibility that some members of the public may have gone to City Hall thinking that we were going to be there. I don't want to deny them the opportunity to speak at the public hearing, should they wish to. So, we are going to push the public hearing down in the agenda a little bit until we learn whether there is anyone at City Hall. And if there is, we'll then give them some time to get home so that they can participate with the public hearing. I apologize to the Hernandezes for that, but I think in the interest of fairness to the public, it's the proper way to proceed.
This Alan started to review. The security guard just went upstairs to check, so we should get back to you about a few more minutes, okay?
Okay, that sounds good. Thanks. 2023-60, this is an 824 referral. City of Norwalk, Calf Pasture Beach right-of-way and road reconstruction agreement, deed classification agreement and declaration of restrictive covenant between the city of Norwalk and Gardella Brothers Limited Liability Company. Report and recommend action. Who is going to represent either the city or the Gardella family?
Good evening, Commissioner. Darren Callahan with the Law Department, City of Norwalk, here to speak on the issue. This has already been before a joint committee session of Department of Public Works and Parks and Recreation. Earlier this month, it was forwarded, passed and forwarded by both departments. I believe, well, certainly with the majority, but I believe with a full vote of every member affirmatively. The issue here is just the 824 review regarding an agreement that has to do with addressing, really effectively settling landright issues as it relates to a certain portion, it's just the northerly and westerly portions of Calf Pasture Beach. Just to provide a little background, and I'll try to move as quickly as possible. Calf Pasture Beach is a 33-acre parcel land, and it was acquired from the abutting landowners over 100 years ago by way of a quick claim deed, 1922. And the current owners are the Gardella family, so they're the successor of interest in that abutting property. And so they have the same rights that were reserved in the deed. It reserved in favor of the grantors in the deed when the property was conveyed to the city. Meaning that we were conveyed such rights in the deed, except as reserved by the grantors. About 70 years ago, the Gardellas approached the city seeking to address a series of issues concerning the Calf Pasture Beach deed. The issues mostly arose around poorly defined and outdated reservation restricted restriction language within the deed. And other issues upon which a global resolution was sought as well. Over the past years, this has been, you know, it's touched several different attorneys within the law department, and it's also gone through several different attorneys on the Gardella side as well. Over the past few, over the past year or so, we were able to to work with new counsel that the Gardellas hired in a very collaborative way to get to a resolution. But and there's a lot of kind of intricacies in the overall agreement. But as it relates to the 824 review, I want to hit on the two pertinent ones. So, I'm just going to share my screen if that's okay with the commission. In my memorandum backup that I provided, I outlined the various issues. The first one was a reservation of a right-of-way in the deed. And the language I'm highlighting on my screen is the actual reservation language itself. The problem with this is that it doesn't, it says generally where this right-of-way is is supposed to be, but it doesn't really clearly define the scope, geographic location and actual geographical footprint of that right-of-way. So, one of the tasks in addressing a multitude of issues with the Gardella family in this global resolution was to determine exactly where the scope in geographic location of the right-of-way. For those of you trying, you know, trying to get a picture of what I'm talking about here, the northerly and westerly portions of Calf Pasture Beach are northerly here and westerly over here. So, somewhere in that vicinity, there's supposed to be a right-of-way that allows both access and egress to and from the Gardellas parcels over Calf Pasture Beach to the actual physical public road, which is Calf Pasture Beach Road. The resolution was fairly simple and eloquent. The right-of-way, after many years of discussing this, would simply be over the existing footprint of the ingress and egress lanes of Calf Pasture Beach Road, which are highlighted in magenta on your screen. Except for a portion of the egress lane, which would be reconfigured to help facilitate the traffic flow in and out of Calf Pasture Beach. In addition to the traffic flow into the Gardellas parcels. This would include a three driveway aprons that I'm going to highlight with my cursor here, here, in here. And crossover mediums directly aligned with those driveway aprons. So ultimately, what we've done is taken what is undefined, effectively undefined right-of-way, we've defined it in order to resolve that issue. Secondarily, the Gardellas desire to acquire some additional easement rights between the inbound access lane for Calf Pasture Beach and their property line. And that area is what's highlighted over here, this is the westerly portion in yellow highlight and right here, which is actually the northerly portion of Calf Pasture Beach. This issue had previously gone before the committees of the common council had previously gone before the common council and executive session on multiple occasions. And it was not something that the city was willing to entertain at this time. And that the feeling was that sometime down the road, when there was a pending site plan application and the city could turn to determine that granting some or all those easements would be in its interest, that it may then take up the issue at that time. The concern that was left was, well, how do we know that that area will be available for easements? And we're talking easements, we're talking about sidewalk, bike path, landscaping and utility location easements. So, the way we ultimately were able to address that issue, that hurdle in the global resolution was creating a restrictive covenant, an agreement that restricts, instead of grants, the Gardellas a right to do specific activities in the area. The agreement actually restricts the city from taking, undertaking certain activities in an area for a limited period of time. In this case, the period of time would be six years. The city would agree to not make any improvements that would inhibit the ability for construction of easement, construction of improvements such as sidewalks, bike path, landscaping and utility development in that area down the road. The idea being is to allow the Gardellas some time to determine how they want to use the property and prepare a site plan for the same. Those are really the two main aspects of the agreement that are before this commission for 824 review because they're land rights issues. There are other components of it that I'm happy to discuss if the commission's interested. But those are the relevant salient portions of the agreement. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for Attorney Callahan?
Yeah, thanks for that presentation. One question is regarding the restricted covenant we were just speaking of. What happens after that six-year period if no site plan was brought forward or improvement suggested to that area?
So, that's a, that's a great question. So, that was our concern as well is that while there was a willingness to not, to refrain from making any improvements in the area for a period of time. It couldn't be forever. Obviously, it's a, it's a large city parcel. It's, it's, it's a park. It's heavily used. It's the beach. And it's necessary to have the ability to plan improvements for the park as a parcel, you know, for use now and for the use in the future. So, what we thought was reasonable is to, is limiting the restriction to six years. After that, if they haven't met, if they haven't brought forward a site plan and the city hasn't determined from that site plan that they're willing to grant some easements. And maybe, maybe the city's only willing to allow sidewalks there and not a landscaping easement or utilities and not, you know, sidewalks, you know. Or maybe it's willing to allow for more. But it would only be for that limited period of time, and we would be inhibited from making improvements in that area. After that, it, the risk is, the risk of their delay is on them. Ultimately, we can improve the area, and if it forecloses their ability to make improvements consistent with a site plan application, they'd be out of luck.
Okay, summarize that back real quick, just to make sure I understood. So, at the expiration of that six-year term, the city would be able to make improvements in that space as it sees fit and wouldn't be restricted by the landowner. Am I getting that right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Richard and then Tammy?
I had a question. So, what effect does this agreement have on the Planning and Zoning Commission when a site plan application comes in?
It's not, it's not, it's not binding on the decision-making process of the Planning and Zoning Commission in any shape or form. The restricted covenant is simply a mechanism to maintain the status quo in that area so that the city can make the decision down the road whether it's interested in granting easement rights. But it would have no effect on the jurisdiction and authority of the Planning and Zoning Commission in any shape or form.
Thank you.
Yes.
I mean, Tammy and then Darius?
Thank you. Hi, Mr. Callahan. Are the, good evening. Are the three easements specific to the, the way the property is divided into three different parcels? The way the Gardellas own it?
Yeah, so they actually own four right now. There's, there's one. It's not shown on that, on that map because it's a lot line boundary adjustment map. But as it's currently configured, it's four. But as a condition of going forward with this agreement, they have agreed to a boundary line adjustment, changing for, it's just one non-buildable lot. It's a very thin 55, 50-foot wide or 20-foot wide parcel. That's, that's simply really not a buildable lot. So, they agreed to effectively take four lots and convert it to three, which I think was a big benefit to the city.
And thank you. And in any of the city's conversation, conversations with the Gardellas, have they indicated what they might do? Or why they want these easements?
You know, I, I think they have some concepts, but we haven't seen anything to the level of something that would be, you know, presentable to the Planning and Zoning Commission, which is, which is why there was a lack of interest in granting easements at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Darius? You're muted, Darius.
Sorry, thank you. Had we heard any, had TMP or DPW or Parks and Breck staff, did they have any input in the process of this?
Oh, that's a really, really good question, and I, my apologies for not bringing it up first. So, as I mentioned, this was a seven-year process. And an extraordinary amount of work was put in negotiations, drafts, back and forth in involvement of city staff. And to answer your question, this resolution, this agreement, of which the portions I just spoke to have been reviewed and recommended by the Department, the Chief of Public Works, the Director of Parks and Recreation, the Director of TMP. I feel like I'm missing someone. The Chief of Staff, the Corporation Council. It was a true roundtable of top-level staff at the city who were involved in solicited, feedback was solicited from, and ultimately, the final agreement was something that everyone felt comfortable bringing forward and recommending, understanding that the property we're dealing with is Calf Pasture Beach.
Okay, any other questions before we move on to action?
Mike here.
Go ahead, Mike.
Hi, Darren. There's a parking area to the right when you drive into Calf Pasture. It's kind of unimproved parking, you know, it's kind of gravelly and weeds and whatever. But is that property a part of Calf Pasture or is that the Gardella property? Do you know? Because I remember, I kind of remember in the back of my mind from six, I couldn't believe when I read that it was four years ago or maybe three, three or four years ago, because it seemed like yesterday that we were talking about this on the planning commission, you know, before the commissions were combined. Yeah. And I remember that there was discussion of moving the road over to the right or somehow changing that weird overflow parking area that's, you know, kind, it's kind of an eyesore more than anything, but it just seems like wasted space on the right side. So, is that, is that, is that parcel in, in this easement agreement? Or is there some idea of what we're going to do with that eventually?
So, that's the area which we're restricting for, for a period of time.
Got it. Okay, so I'm sorry if I missed that in your presentation.
No, no, it's, this is somewhat, it's, there's a lot of moving parts here. It's a great question. That area is, that area is part of Calf Pasture Beach. And it's the area that runs from the inbound lane curb path to the actual boundary lineup of the Gardella parcel. And it's about 50 feet wide, and you're right, it is, there is a gravel, gravelly area. It's a mixture of gravel and some rough grass in there, and it is not the most attractive portion of Calf Pasture Beach, for sure. It is the area where, you know, initially, the Gardellas had stake claim of their right-of-way. And it made no sense to have three lanes coming in and out of Calf Pasture Beach, which is one of the reasons why, you know, this, this agreement on, on the location of the ingress and egress is quite beneficial to the city. And it does need to be improved. And I think that, how, how it would be improved is, is a big question and an important question. And currently, it is used for overflow parking mostly, I believe, for like softball games and things of that nature. The answer to your question is it, it'll remain, remain the status quo for up to six years. It may be that the Gardellas bring forward a site plan application in the next two years to develop it, and you know, there's, there's some activation improvements in that area as a result of that at that time. But we've agreed to, to maintain the status quo for a period of six years. It was, again, part of a global resolution. And just to kind of understand what we got, I want to say we got in return because it, you know, it, it's, there's a bunch of parts. But one, one of the, one of the things that in the, that's in the deed that a lot of people don't realize is there's, there's restrictions on use of Calf Pasture Beach. And it's about, in the restrictions were created in 1922, so they relooked, they were created in 1922. And it's at points, it was difficult to understand totally if the city was violating those restrictions or not. And I think at many points, you know, the argument could be made that it, that it was and that the Gardellas had some grace in allowing things to occur and not looking to enforce those, those restrictions. But ultimately, as a result of this agreement, the, all the, almost all the restrictions were removed and replaced with a very broad and general one that allows the city to use Calf Pasture Beach in the same manner as we use any other park in the, in the city. And so, we've cleared, cleaned that up, cleared it out, and are, are really have set ourselves up to not have any issues with the use of the park because of the deed.
Okay. We ready to move on to action?
Mr. Schollman, if I may, I know it's a little bit out of the ordinary, but I represent the Gardellas. And I, I could, I would like to add maybe just two comments if you would indulge me.
Yeah, listen, I'm sorry. I didn't realize you were on.
Only as a representative of the Gardellas, yes.
Absolutely. I just wanted to mention two things. One, the other individual who was important in the, in crafting the global resolution was, of course, Steve Kleppin of Planning and Zoning. And I wanted to thank Darren Callahan and Mario Capola, as well as Larry Cafaro and myself. We, the three of us, four of us, worked very hard to bring this to fruition. And if it wasn't for the efforts of Mr. Capola and Mr. Callahan, we would not be here today. So, I wanted just to go on record and thank them for their hard work, not only in the past year that Mr. Cafaro and I have been working on this, but certainly in the years prior to that. So, thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. And, Mr. Commissioner, I would just like to add that I, I agree equally with those comments as it relates to Attorney Sachi and Attorney Cafaro. They were wonderful to deal with. It would not have been done without their involvement. And we were very glad when they were brought aboard by the Gardellas.
Okay, let's move on to action. Can we take, there we go, take it down. Thank you. Thank you, Brian. Can I have a motion to approve the resolution?
I'll move to approve.
Was that you, Tammy?
That was Galen announced.
Oh, I'm sorry, Galen. Okay, Galen moves and Darius, you second?
Yes, sir.
Okay, any further discussion? All right, if not, let's take this down. And let's do a roll call on this.
All right, I believe you seated Mr. Patches for this one, right?
Yes.
All right, let's start with Mr. Patches.
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Jordan Byron?
I'm going to abstain.
Ms. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
Mr. Mushak?
Yes.
Ms. Langallis?
Yes.
Mr. Rowena?
Yes.
And Mr. Schollman?
Yes.
All right, that passes.
Okay, thank you. At this point, let me ask Alan Lowe if he has an answer from the security guard?
Yes, Lou. I just wanted, since this, you're having, you have a public hearing, which is a legal procedure. So, I want to make sure that I do this formally, if you can excuse me, but I'm going to be a little more formal about it. So, at your request, I have communicated my building management staff, and they reached out to the security guard. And there's nobody waiting in the lobby because since you didn't notice, you didn't establish any room numbers. So, there's nobody in the lobby, and also security, I went up to the common council chamber, there's nobody in there as well. So, only thing the security guy mentioned is that there was somebody looking for a meeting, but they didn't say which meeting it was, and that person has left. So, I also left a text message for the, for my team to advise the security guard to, if somebody comes in for a planning and zoning meeting, the, the security guard is going to advise the person to that the meeting is virtual. So, I think, I think we technically cover, so I read this in the record so that it covered your legal side of what, what we've done in terms of addressing this little conflict on the agenda.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much for your help.
Question, can, can Alan instruct the security guard to put up a sign? Because not everyone who walks past that desk, you know, inquires about which meeting they want to go to. Sometimes they just walk and they just get on the elevator.
I, I think, I think the, it's not, it's not that simple. The security guard, I don't know what his, his capabilities are in terms of putting a, I mean, you sound simple, but I think when we don't list a number, people come in here looking for it, they would probably ask the security guy. I think that was a normal human behavior. I don't, I'm not sure if I asked them to put out a sign, I'm not sure what they're going to put down. So, as I was saying, it's a
Planning and zoning is, it's right, it's
They even have, you know, something they can write it with, there's something they can write it on, you know, the security
I thought you meant should, yeah, well, I can ask, but I'm not sure we can accomplish anything. I thought you mean should, yeah, yeah, well, I can ask, but I'm not sure we can accomplish anything uh with.
Okay. It's just covering all bases. I mean, I know when I go to, I don't always stop at the, at the front desk. If I know.
And also, and also.
Fortunately, we didn't assign a room.
Yeah, usually when we do, we do, we do the signs, we do it in our office. The security guard doesn't do that. So not because it's. It's just, it's not their thing to do. So I'm not sure. And also your, your public, public hearing is actually first item of the agenda. So it's uh, it's three, six thirty-four already. So if you take it later, uh, it will be. I think you just, uh, uh, if the chairman can just notify, repeat it that the, the, the public hearing hasn't happened yet and just repeat it. So they give the people a chance to people stay on the meeting so that they can, they can participate if they got home.
All right.
I mean, I'm, I'm sure, I'm not, don't, don't, I don't mean to disagree with you. I just, I, I can ask, but by the time they put something up, I don't know what it would say. And also it's like, it could be a half an hour later. So I'm not sure it's of any purpose.
I, 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 I agree with Mr. Lowe. Um, and I think we ought to move forward with our meeting. We will. Take items B and C and we will then uh move on to uh the public hearing. Um, so that um, uh, if anyone did show up. Um, they may still have an opportunity to speak at the public hearing if they wish. Um. We're going to move on to uh item B and um. Uh, Commissioner Tabacnik has uh been seated for this. That's twenty twenty-three dash sixty-one. This is another eight twenty-four referral. City of Norwalk Sheffield Road District Six. Block twenty-eight C, Lot Seven. Disposition of city property to Stephen A. Adelman. And Sally Arnold Adelman, owners of eight Sheffield Road. Report and recommend action. Um. Uh, Alan, are you representing the city?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Please go ahead.
Oh, sure. Thank you. Um, to say I'm not walk through uh a, a few years ago, I think about two years ago. Uh, got this piece of property in uh, in Sheffield, which is Rowayton area. Uh, it's about, I think it's point two, I don't have my memo in front of me, so there's a memo in the file. Uh, I think it's point two, three acres as I memory correct, correct? Um, the city got this property from a tax foreclosure because the property owner did not pay the taxes for a number of years. And when as part of tax, uh, uh, tax closure sale, uh, it went out to bid and nobody submitted a bid for this property. The property, again, the property is point two, three acres and it's, it's, I would say ninety percent plus of it is wetlands. So it, it's speech in between two residential property and I think there's a map that probably attached file. Um, so we owned it for, I would say about a year and a half, two years and uh the, our neighbor, uh, the Adelman's. Uh, bought the house, I think last October or something about a year ago. And they are very interested in, in, in getting this property from the city. Uh, so that they are very, very, I'm, I'm amazed. I mean, they are very, very sensitive to uh protecting wetlands and things like that. Um, and they approached the city, the land use and building manager committee of common council, went through about six months with this process. It's very slow because it's not priority on our list. At the same time, we're going for it slowly and when we went for a public hearing. And then we also decided that even though that there was a public bidding process a couple of years ago for tax foreclosure. Uh, we decided advertise it again, so they recover all bases and. We did not get another proposal to purchase the property. Uh, it's very unique because it's not, again, it's a, really had no buildable value. Uh, and the, the, I think that the test assessment adjusted the value to, I think, three thousand dollars for, for a, a assessed value. So I think it's a, I think this is a um. In a way benefit to the city because it's a piece of property that just beginning, we don't even know we owned it for, for the last couple of years and uh. And we're now out there taking care of it. I think the, the Adelman's has expressed real serious interest in, 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 in doing the right thing for the, for that little piece of land. And um, I think it's a, it's a, it's a benefit in terms of protecting the little piece of wetland in the middle of the neighborhood. Um. Beyond that, I think that's about all I have to say. Uh, we did a little environmental testing. There's no contamination on the site. Um. Uh, I think that's a, a, a subject.
When you say, Alan, when you say it's not buildable, but does that mean that? People couldn't use it as in a park form?
Yeah, we also, actually requested consideration by the law, Norwalk Land Trust to see they're interested. They felt that it's too small for them to, to, to get, to, to own the property because it's, this, again, I think they want, be interested in a couple acres at least. And this is less than a, this is a quarter of acre. So, um. I've, I've been on the property, conservation has been on the property, Alexis has been on the property. And she generally agrees with us that it is wetland. It's, it's not. Generally speaking, not buildable. Uh, so, and also, we also consider, because part of the Adelman's property, eight Sheffield Road. Um, they, but I would say about third of the property, you look at the map that's attached to the memo. Uh, part, part of the property has wetlands on it too. I think there, there was issue for a previous property owner. Uh, that there's some um made a filter or dumped stuff on it. So they, they were, they, the previous property owner was asked to correct that, that issue already. Uh, but at the same time, sometimes we look at a piece of property, when the adjacent property, why the property potentially, they can reconfigure the property to, and do subdivision. But the citizens that our property and their property, one third of it is wetland, there's really not, not any opportunity to kind of, we configure the two site to create. To, to combine it and subdivide it back to two site, but potentially two buildable lots. So, um. So tho- those are things we looked at uh in terms of consider the value and how much is worth the property's worth.
And this, by deeming it ninety percent wetland, does that mean? In the future, nothing can be done to change that? Like it is wetland in perpetuity?
No, we just, all we do is sell it to them. They have to go through all the regular, uh, regulatory procedure if they want to build on it.
Uh. Right, I guess like my reaction, maybe I'm being very naive to all this is giving. A quarter of an acre in Rowayton for a thousand dollars to someone.
When in this year, it was appraised at ninety-five thousand in the same year? I'm sorry.
Yes.
But then it was re- no, go ahead, Alan.
Yeah. That's, that's part, that's basically the reason why the people don't pay taxes on it because it's not, they can't sell it, they can't develop it. And, and, and we didn't change the appraisal. They just stopped paying taxes on it for a, a number of years and then the city uh end up with the property. Uh, when, when the tax assessor went out, look at it, they came back and says, you can't build on this. So, so they adjusted the value to something. And the lowest they can go is three thousand, I think it's three thousand nine hundred and three thousand seven hundred dollars for the, for, for us. The, the other thing is that's, this, as the city property, we don't challenge the appraisal values. So we don't go and look at our, our city property and, 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 and uh look at the price value and challenge them. So, so it could be. Hundred thousand dollars, it could be, you know, ten thousand dollars. It just stays in the record book, but that's what it is. But again, it just exists, the, the value just exists. So. It really is not a um. At ninety-five thousand dollars, that's why people don't, don't pay taxes on it and, and we end up owning the property. I think right now we have, we technically, we have maintenance responsibility, we have liability on that property. Um, if somebody dumps on the property. Um, I'm not sure who we call because if we call DBW or Post Department, they, they wouldn't even know that we own the property. So I think it was with, with eyes and ears on the property. I think it's a benefit overall in the community to have somebody have uh. Manage it. And for some reason, if uh, you know, if the property gets sold in the future. Um, or for some reason it get developed, the city will, will, will gain. Tax value from the property if that ever happens, but I, I really doubtful because the property, there's a, there's a brook that go through it right now. So you, you know, this is. It's more than just wet, it's actually have a pond dish kind of thing, you know, there's, there's water, flowing water through it, so.
Um, any other questions?
Uh, Lou, I, I don't have a question, but I just have a comment.
Sure, go ahead, Tammy.
Thank you. Um, I agree with Mr. Lowe. I'm very familiar with the property and it's wet ninety-nine percent of the time. Um, the people that bought the, a budding property, uh, there's a serious sump pump. Drainage system in the crawl space in that house, the water table is very high there. Uh, and the house that's on Rowayton Avenue between Meeker and Sheffield. Their backyard is frequently wet and when. The subdivision of Meeker Court, I don't know if anybody on the commission, I think Mike might have been there. Uh, the neighbors on Meeker Court were complaining how all the water ran off the hill behind their houses on Meeker Court and. Into their yards and that is, that parcel is connected. To all of that runoff. So I think the city, like Alan said, is good to. Get rid of it and it's great that the Nate, that the person that bought it wants to, you know, maintain it and preserve it and. Probably enhance it and put some good plants in it or something. So I'm with Mr. Lowe on this.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, quickly. I um, I should have said this before this started, but it started so quickly, I didn't get a chance. Um, I have to recuse myself from this vote if you want to. Appoint someone else.
Um, well, why don't we uh do that? Um. We'll um, uh, appoint Mr. Bryce. So uh, we can have Ms. Ms. Tabacnik as well as Mr. Bryce uh voting on this item. Thank you, Richard.
Sorry, one point of clar- question of clarification, is there anything requiring? Uh, these new owners to preserve it in, in a park like for, you know, in the form that it is?
No, there is nothing.
Right, so they can, so again, I'm not trying to be difficult. I'm trying to wrap my head around this one a little bit of like. Giving, you know, someone's getting a quarter of an acre in Rowayton for a thousand dollars.
Didn't we have a situation like this within the last year on it with another parcel?
No, the only one I remember is the West Norwalk where was, we paid money for, we bought. Property to become parkland, a little bit of parkland or something like that, if I remember correctly.
The land trust.
The land trust took the opposite.
Yes, no, but I do believe there was another um situation.
Just like this?
Yes.
I just don't remember.
Nick, I would point out another benefit i- if somebody actually owns it. Is that landscapers won't be dumping their yard waste on it because the homeowners will. You know, see to it that that doesn't happen.
And were it to be approved, it would also increase their value, which would also increase the revenue.
Yes, and, and.
Some small way.
Just to be clear, this is not prime downtown Rowayton. It's. Literally like the last parcel. But anyway, and it's wet all the time. I've been here for thirty years and it's wet, but anyway.
All right, uh, let's put up.
Looks like Steve has a question too, or his hands up.
Let's, uh, we've got JJ, um, Mike.
Well, Steve was first.
Okay, Steve, JJ, Mike.
No, I, I don't need to, I'm just gonna, by the way, last, I started. Um, I was gonna say the wetlands are based on soil type, not just the presence of standing water. So if. The property has been determined it's ninety plus percent um wetlands, that's done by soil scientist who goes out and. Take soil samples and determines that. So you can't build structures within the wetlands. They might let you put like a. Boardwalk or something like that, but you can't build a shed, you can't. Expand your house into the wetlands or any of those kind of things. So just keep that in mind for, for future thoughts.
Okay, go ahead, JJ.
Okay, so Tammy mentioned that um, um, the, the possibility of landscapers dumping. Um, you know, debris into the, the lot, um, would, that, you know, the, the new ownership would, would eliminate that. And I'm wondering, is that something that's happening now? Are people using this as a dump site?
I've been on the property once, but I, if any kind of dump, I didn't. I was told there is, but again, you asked me if I know of any, I don't know of any. Um. I think it's very possible. Uh, it's, it's kind of like no man's land kind of thing. Um. I think, I mean, I, I, I mean, me as a staff of the city, uh, and, and, and uh Jones speaking, charge of surface property in the city. I think it is benefits for us to, to, for the city overall to, to, to do this. Um. I think we have certain responsibilities property owner um to, to maintain, preserve these properties or, or to, to be out there. But you know, again, if uh. We are not here, we are not there, uh, it's a small piece of property that we don't have a. Active role in, in, you know, to go and buy, again, if we call DBW or Post Department, they wouldn't even know that the city owns the property. So. And also if any, if there's tree fell in there, whatever this kind of thing, it's like, it's, it's, it's a. Uh, it's very difficult for, 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 for governmental entity to ma- manage this little piece of property. I don't want to say anymore because I don't want to discourage the Adelman to take the property. It's a, it's a weird, it's a kind of like relationship, you, I think they are very interested. I think they're sincere. Um. You know what? In, in a few years, it doesn't work out, the city can always go back and says, maybe it's not them, it is sold the property. If they are, you know, they could be uh. We can potentially go wet, what, wetland folks can go in and, 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 and file complaints about it, and they would stop paying taxes and we end it back again. So I don't think we have been, we don't lose anything by, by selling this property right now. And we are hoping that the, the neighbor will take care of it, monitor it and, and, and to provide service to a community that. It's harder for the city as a somewhat outside body to, 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 to us, provide specific service to that little piece of land. Uh, again, if something happened in the future and the property got sold and nobody's taking care of it, at some point, they don't pay taxes on it, whatever the value is and. And to put, we'll come back to the city.
Okay, Mike, you?
Well, I trust uh both Alan and Tammy. Uh, as you know, Tammy's as a resident of Rowayton uh and her knowledge of that area. And the, I've seen streams event, you know, slowly. Get clogged up with leaves that are blown in because it's cheaper to blow them, you know, off your property into a wetlands than it is to. Truck them away. Although I do encourage keeping uh leaves as owner of a landscape design company. Um, I don't do maintenance, but I uh. Encourage people to keep leaves on their property and compost them rather than send them off to a dump. But uh, if, if they have the space, but I've seen uh, uh, streams eventually get clogged. Which would create a liability uh if the cities maintained ownership of the property. Because that area, the drainage is so crucial. Uh, and if, if, I, I don't know the exact layout of. Uh, of that spot specifically we're talking about, I could have gone out there myself, but I didn't. To be honest, but uh, I think all of this makes sense because then the liability is not going to be on the city. Um, if, you know, they didn't monitor and it slowly got filled up with debris and leaves. It's mostly leaves that. Are the culprit of uh, of people blowing into wetlands and then backing up. Water, you can imagine, it just dams up the water and then that backs up. Onto people's properties. It happens slowly over time, but eventually it, it uh. It can create a real nuisance. Uh. Although I guess you could say it's an expanded wetlands, but it's, it's still a nuisance for property owners. So. Uh, all, all the, I do trust Tammy uh when she, when she gave that, this, the. Vote, the uh, her vote of approval and uh Alan uh as well. So yeah, I mean, I'm going to support this.
Right, Darius and Chapin?
You can go, chief.
Uh, sure, so um. The, the thousand dollars does feel like a nominal fee here and I, I understand that we have not gotten any higher bids for this. Um. I appreciate the applicant's um outline of their, their planned improvements to uh, to the, the nature and to be able to, to preserve this. Um, I'm curious if uh we can add either a condition to this approval or maybe the deed. I'm not sure what's appropriate. Um, to just ensure that these improvements actually happen um as uh, you know, it'd be great to, to see those improvements and not um. Um, have this uh, this, this nominal sale and for the property to, to remain the same. And I, I have a second follow-up, but wanted to start there. So the question is, can we add a condition of approval on them making this improvement? And or does that need to be part of the deed? I, I'm not sure where that control may be if it's possible. So you could, you can put that into. You can request that council consider it, but it, it's, it's really their call. You, you guys are just making the. Eight twenty-four determination and beyond that, you're, you're not actually approving anything. Okay, uh, Attorney Lowe, is that something that uh you and your team would consider uh applying to, I guess, the deed at that point? I'm, I'm not sure, or the, the deal, the closing? Yeah.
Oh, um, yeah, it's gonna be what Steve says, it's um. The, it's really, it's whether it's the A- Adelman's next door or somebody else really approving the sale, this probably to, 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 to somebody, right? So it's, it's not as personal as it seems, but we, we, I personally got, but know, know the Adelman from, from meeting with them when they talk about this stuff. And I think they are very passionate people about, about what they want to do. And uh, you know, um, I've been in this business a long time and well. You know, I, I see many people that come, say what they say and never do what they do. Um, I think it is a benefit to the city to do this. So I'm not sure we want to put more restriction to it because at some point it's like, if they decide to move on. Again, I, I think they're listening to this conversation, so maybe I shouldn't may not say this, but at the same time, it's a, you know. It's like, if they decide not to do it tomorrow, I gotta go. it's like, if they decide not to do it tomorrow, I gotta go to the city to spend money to cut down a tree and do all this stuff, I don't sure I think it's a good faith effort, and they put it in writing to us already, and I think at some point, I think there's a respect with between relationship and and humans that I think we need to put some value to that. Uh, and again, it's a, you know, today's well, it's a, you know, we want to get a bond from people, at some point, they say, you know, thank you very much, but we're not interested. Then tomorrow, he can, they can, they can call and say, by the way, on your property, you gotta do this, you gotta do that, you gotta do that. The city is not prepared to do all this stuff to take care of this property, so if there's a hope that they are going to live up to this, and I I I would rather take some faith in it and and a faith in between individuals and people to do the right thing for the environment, for the for the and the property next to that, because it's affected property value too, right? So if you don't take care of it, it affects the property value, so I think I would like to 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 request the commission to take into those things into consideration, the 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 human side of this thing, instead of putting more restriction, make life more difficult, while somebody is trying to do something that positive to the community and 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 chasing to the property. I think it's a benefit, it's worthwhile to for us to, you know what, there are times to take some risks, and it's not a big risk because we own the property, we're not taking care of it, so again, he calls up to, there's a tree that falling down, whatever kind of thing, it's very hard to get in there because it's all handwork, you can't drive a vehicle in there to cut down a tree. So I'm not, I mean, I'm not sure, the city is not, again, I mean, we we have to do it, we'll do it, but at the same time, at what cost kind of thing? If somebody can keep an eye and do the right thing, I think let's give them a chance, you can't do it in the future kind of thing, we might end up back to the city and we have nothing lost, nothing gained.
Okay, one quick follow up on that, um, are are these lots going to remain as two separate lots, or are they being joined into one new lot, maybe that was mentioned earlier?
I really don't know, I think the Texas Census Office certain times, once somebody owns the property a long enough time, they merge into one piece of property. Um, so again, it's a, uh, you know, initially, once they do this, it's still safe for two pieces of property, it takes I don't know, they said whether maybe, maybe Brian can answer this better than I could, but I've seen that with city property, a lot of times, we somehow emerged, got what, got property and stuff, they stay on the on on tax law, different lots, and then becomes, eventually it becomes one lot, but then when we go through with somebody who wants to do a subdivision, those lot lines still exist uh, from previous, so that gives people the right to subdivide again because there's historically, there was two lots, but uh, I think Brian maybe answered those questions better than I could.
Yeah, so I guess the, we have a merger clause, um, so essentially, if you have uh a non-conforming lot next to another lot and they're both in the same ownership, technically, they get merged as one. Um, I I don't know if that would apply here since it's an existing, it's a separate lot, and we don't know if the ownership is going to be exactly the same as the the property next door. Um, so I guess we we don't know.
Okay, and and how long again until the clause kicks in? How long, you know? Yeah, I I've been here forty years, I still don't know, because I don't think there's a rule, I think when Texas Census Office, when they go throughs, you know, uh, the tax lots and stuff, and sometimes they find something that the two people, city owns two lot next to each other, they will consolidate them. But I don't think there's a timeframe, I think they just, you know, when they get to certain thing, where they see something, they'll pick it up kind of thing. Like doing the reval or something in the name? Yeah, so it's not an active thing that within, within two years, they have to do something, no, I think it's really like procedurally, but like, like Brian said, when they're separate individual lot that that are, that are, that are conforming lots, I think, I don't think they would do anything, but they get, again, it's um, it's not, again, I don't think there's a regulatory requirement, they merge property together, it's more the convenient, uh, but again, from selling and planning, selling perspective, plans, so I still look at them and put, it's two lots, because in in the future, there are subdivisions, then they look at those old lots to determine it. Like facts, uh, like uh, photo farm, there's usually six lots in it, so those lot lines disappear, but when we talk about subdividing and stuff, those lot can be re reintroduced for discussion.
All right.
Understood, thanks.
Let's put up the resolution. Motion to approve uh the resolution? Whoever? Okay, Darius moves the resolution.
I'll second Luke.
And Tammy seconds. Um, okay, let's do a roll call.
All right, Steve, you want to do this one, I child?
No problem, um, I believe, just I want to clarify, Mr. Tabachnik and Mr. Bryce were seated, correct?
Oh, that that's, that's correct.
Okay, uh, Mr. Tabachnik?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Ling Dallas?
Yes.
Mr. Cantor?
No.
Mr. Bryce?
Yes.
Ms. Jordan Byron?
Yes.
Ms. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Muschak?
Yes.
Mr. Rowena?
Uh, Mr. Rowena has
Oh, I'm sorry, abstain, I'm sorry, and Mr. Schollman?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, it's approved. Good night, Alan.
Bye bye.
Okay, uh, uh, the um, uh, final review and action application, twenty twenty-two dash thirty-nine S P. The Norwalk Hospital Association, thirty-four Maple Street, extension of time request for the construction of their seven-story addition to the existing hospital, and I assume that uh, that is you, Attorney Satchi?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. Um, Mr. Chairman, members of commission, this is a straightforward uh request for extension of time, it's the first request. Um, between the time this application was approved last year for the construction of the new patient pavilion, my client has undertaken a variety of uh steps necessary to move us forward, one of which was recording the Mylar and certificate of of special permit. They also secured a zoning permit in February of this year, we're moving forward to secure the building permit. The two things emerged, uh, the first one is not as significant, although it's it's important in that a two hundred eighty million dollar project is nearly a three million dollar building permit, so that's just something that we're dealing with. But more importantly, there's been an issue that emerged in connection with the uh closure of the inpatient mental health uh component of hospital. Uh, that is current, that that request to close that unit is currently before the state's Office of Healthcare Strategy, and we anticipate a decision following a hearing on that matter that took place either yesterday or today uh, within the next couple of weeks or months, so the fact that that's still in the, hasn't been resolved puts us in a little bit of a difficult position because if that unit needs to be made, be maintained on site, we'll have to do some reconfiguration. So we thought it would be prudent to come to you, request the extension of time, hoping that that issue with um Department of Healthcare Strategy will be resolved quickly, and then we can move forward with securing the building permit. We would appreciate a year so that we don't have to come back to you, but I don't anticipate that it's going to be a a year-long process. So if there aren't any questions, and if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them, but that's the reason why we're before you for this extension of time.
Thank you. Uh, are there any questions for Attorney Satchi? All right, i- i- if not, uh, can I have a motion to uh approve the request for the extension?
I'll make the motion, Luke.
Okay, Tammy uh has made the motion, is there a second? And uh, Darius uh has uh seconded, any discussion? Um, for those of you relatively new to the uh commission, uh, these requests, especially a first request um, are fairly routine uh matters. Uh, we we would, uh, at least in my view, have to have some extraordinary reason uh not to approve it. Uh, if uh that was the action we were to take. Um, with that, I think uh, we can do this one with a hand raise.
Mr. Schollman, who's seated, sorry.
Go ahead.
Uh, who who is seated?
Oh, my, 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 my apologies, uh, Mr. Potchus is seated uh for this action.
Oh, I thought a chip in was for the third.
You, you were, you were seated, um, you were not seated for the last item, so you are seated for this.
Okay, got it.
Yes, I'm just going in uh order. Okay, uh, all those in favor of the one-year extension, just raise your hand. Uh, are there any opposed? Are there any abstentions? Okay, uh, the motion passes uh unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, appreciate your help.
Thank you. Okay, um, I I think we uh have been as fair uh to the public as uh we can be, it's now seven oh four, an hour after our starting time, and I think in fairness to the applicant, uh, we need to uh move on to uh the uh, uh, public hearing. Uh, and next in line to be seated uh would be uh Ms. Tabachnik uh for uh this uh public hearing. Um, this is uh twenty twenty-three dash fifty-four S P. Osman Hernandez, forty-four Van Zandt Street, District Three, Block Thirty-nine. Um, Lot Two, proposed motor vehicle repair use within existing building. Um, let me explain both to uh the applicant and to the public uh, how uh we run our public hearings. Uh, the applicant uh will have an opportunity to uh explain what it is they're doing in as much detail as they feel is uh necessary. During uh that explanation, members of the commission are free to ask questions uh of the applicant. When the applicant has uh completed um their presentation, we will open uh the hearing up to the public. Um, if there is anyone who wishes to speak, we ask that uh you provide us with uh your name and your address, uh, keeping your remarks uh civil. And keep in mind uh that you'll have only one opportunity to speak, so uh if you do speak, please make sure that uh you uh make all the points uh and ask all the questions that are uh important to you. Uh, once uh all the members of the public who wish to speak have had an opportunity, um, we uh will uh close out that portion of the public hearing. Uh, the applicant will have an opportunity to respond uh to questions uh they've heard. Uh, and at which point, uh, the commission members may also ask any uh additional questions they have, um, after which we will close the public hearing and move on to action. Um, I think I've covered everything. With that, uh, I'll uh turn it uh over to the applicant, I see uh, that Osman Hernandez is uh online with us, and I assume is uh the individual who's going to make the presentation. Please join us.
I'm actually, my name is Brenda, I'm his assistant. And I'm here for forty-four Van Zandt Street, District Three, Block Thirty-nine, Lot Two. We're requiring for um special permit for a repair shop license.
Brendan, do you just want to go over sort of what, like, hours of operation, things like that about the business?
Sure, so the hours of operation are from nine to seven P M, as late as we can, try to give people some time to get out of work, can get to us if they need to. We do have a separate garage that is completely separate from the waiting area. So, you know, there there's a lot of safety there, there's plenty of parking spaces on the lot, there's off-street parking as well. There are also other repair shops on the street, on Van Zandt Street, I'd say about, about five of them. And um um, if you guys have any questions, you can, you know, ask me.
But can you, uh, do you know and can you tell us uh for how long um, a repair garage has been located at that site?
At that site, oh, wow, it's been a very long time, I know the landlord, he has, he owns it, he has a variance. He said, I know he has a they have, in their garage, they have um vintage cars that they store there. And then right next to it is our garage for the repairs. And um, for how long, I can't really tell you, but I know previously it was an enterprise as well, before us. And um
Yeah, I think Brendan and Mr. Chairman, my research, I think, is dating back to nineteen eighty-two, was the earliest approval that I could find, so about forty years at this point.
Yes, that is correct, yep, I see that here.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Uh, are there other questions? Okay, uh, not hearing any, uh, uh, is there anything further you wish to say before we open this up to the public?
Um, no, not really, I mean, we just want to do some repairs on cars and just keep people happy and keep it as safe as possible.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, Brian, let's open this up to uh the public, you want to explain how uh, they can um get online to speak if they wish to?
Sure, so if you're a member of the public and you'd like to speak about this application, you could use the raise your hand tool. It's at the bottom of your screen, you just click that once, and if you're dialed in on a phone, you would hit star nine. Raise your hand tool, it's at the bottom of your screen, you click that once, and if you're on a phone, you would hit star nine. Seeing on, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, uh, then we will close uh the public comment portion of the hearing and um, um, go back to the applicant, are there any final comments uh you wish to make?
Um, we do keep the area clean, um, every day, there's garbage outside every single day, but we do maintain it every single day. Every morning I come in, I clean it up, and we actually, um, we cut the trees that were there. We did a lot of little maintenance there, and we did some painting, it's really nice and inviting. And we're looking to actually try to fill up the pothole that's there, we're trying to talk with the landlord, but that's pretty much it. I don't, thank you very much for allowing me to speak.
Um, I do have a question, um, is is there any kind of fencing around? Or hedging?
Yes, there is a fencing between us and the the neighbor next door to the left, there is, yes, and he's pretty nice. Actually, they're, they were actually praising us for actually keeping the noises down because there were some issues with people parking there and just drinking on the property, and it's just, it was a consistent issue, so now that we're trying to fill the spots up, it's just so much better, it's, it's a lot less noisy and a lot less complaints, which is very good.
So is there any overflow with the vehicles that you are servicing, are you parking any vehicles on the street waiting to
No, not at all, they stay within the lot, not on the street. I park in in the lot, it's it's that big.
Okay, thank you.
What about your staff? Are there?
Well, I'm the only one right now, so it's me and the the owner, which he's a mechanic, he does work on vehicles.
Any other questions? Okay, if not, we will close the public hearing and um move on to action. Thank you very much. Um, uh, Brian, uh, can you put up the resolution, please? Thank you. Brian, I have a question on number three regarding landscaping, a- apparently the applicant um uh, does not own this property. Uh, are they nonetheless still responsible uh for maintaining the landscaping uh themselves, should there be an issue?
Um, so ultimately, it it would fall on the property owner, um, if any landscaping was removed or needed to be replaced, it it's ultimately the property owner who'd who'd be responsible for that. Um, but I mean, I think in the past, we've seen um tenants can maybe go beyond what they should be doing and cutting down landscaping that was required, so um, I I think it's safe to keep it in as a, as a condition, and that way the, it keeps the property, um, the property owner sort of responsible.
Okay, thank you. Uh, can you move that up a bit? Okay, thank you. Uh, okay, can I have a motion to approve? Uh, it's like Mike, Mike has made the motion. Is there a second? Uh, if you're, okay, uh, Galen uh, has uh, sent it. Thank you, Galen. You're the bottom of my screen. If it was anyone below you, I wouldn't have seen it. Okay, uh, let's do a roll call on this.
Or, let's see, Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
Ms. Jordan Byron?
Yes.
Ms. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Tabashnik?
Yes.
Ms. Langgallis?
Yes.
Mr. Muschak?
Yes, and thank you for uh, cleaning up every morning when you show up. That's great to hear. That was very nice to hear, actually. Thanks.
Mr. Rowena?
Yes.
And Mr. Scholman.
Yes. All right, uh, it, it's uh, been approved unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys. Have a good night.
Good night.
I meant to ask if she works on Subarus. Oh, well. Next.
Okay, well, it's only seven fifteen. Um, and I believe we have completed all of the scheduled business. But we do uh, have um, uh, discussion twenty twenty-three dash nineteen. R M Planning and Zoning Commission zoning text amendment for complete rewrite of the zoning regulations and map amendment for complete rezoning of the entire city. And it says, if time permits, uh, I think we certainly can begin this discussion uh, with the mixed-use zones clarification. Steve?
Sure, and I'll just pull the memo up and we can start going right down through. Okay. So there, I, I would say, as I put in the memo, there, the, I'd say the most area where we just, just keep making little tweaks to make sure things are going to um, that the form-based piece is going to line up with reality has been in the, you know, urban core area, just because there's a lot of nuance in the proposed regulation versus what we see on the ground. So we're just trying to rectify those things and make sure that when we actually get projects, when these are approved, that they can, you know, hopefully go as smoothly as possible. So that's why we're just keep making little clarifications. And many of these are coming from different, uh, you know, whether it's attorneys or architects or engineers who, who kind of raise questions about, hey, I, we started looking at this site or that site and these questions arose. So we're just trying to make sure things um, line up correctly. So the first one is related to the minimum lot width requirement of a hundred feet. Um, and as we showed in the, you know, a couple of the examples, some of the properties in many of these in, in the South Norwalk area that we're dealing with are just a lot larger than the one hundred foot width. And so it's going to kind of force them to, you know, do things a little differently and probably not lead to the development we, you know, want to see. We're not trying to force them to divide properties or anything along those lines. So the staff recommendation is to um, bump that up to three hundred feet and kind of married with that to, you know, to, and I'm sorry, I'm jumping ahead. Here's just another example of that. This was the uh, park property that was actually approved for development, then they ultimately withdrew. So that piece by itself is over three hundred feet. Um, the idea would be to marry up the three hundred foot lot width with the requirement that they um, have some articulation and built into the building. So that way that the uh, that the building facade is not a blank facade, because that's something we definitely don't want to see. So within the, the regulations, there's uh, built into the, right now, it's only listed in the uh, what's called C D four C, which as you remember, we're going to change to three C, just not to confuse anybody too much. But it does have this articulation standard within the zone um, that kind of, you know, as I mentioned, gets away from that blank facade and that refers to section four, three, five, and specifically the articulation comes in under number three. Um, there's some text that accompanies that as well as a graphic representation of what that um, should look like. So basically, it, it'll, the idea with this piece in, in short, is it makes sure that the building facade gets broken up and we just don't get these blank facades. So we would recommend incorporating that into the uh, the C D, C D five, um, which would be C D four. But that would go along with what we're requiring for the other commercial zones. Does that make sense? Or do we need to back up and revisit that piece again?
Makes sense to me. Um, is there anyone that's confused by this?
Steve, could you please just clarify when you keep talking about blank facades? So you mean a wall with no windows?
No, so it'd be, there would be windows more likely, but it would just be a flat facade versus having the um, the, so the building could undulate, if that makes sense. So there's every, every so often, whether it's a hundred feet, or I think it was the max that they could do, it, the facade has to break up. So it's not just one flat wall.
Okay, so some type of like textural or right angle interest?
Yeah, it could be something like that. There's different ways they could do it, um, whether the, we talked about that uh, the last time. I think the last time we had a conversation related to a project about that was talking about the North Seven design on the first phase of their new development about how you break that up and do you bring the building forward in spots? Do you push it back in spots? Just to kind of lessen the massing.
Got it. Thank you.
All right, so I'll move down and if there's other questions, we could um, pop back up again. Another kind of area that popped up in, in this is, and I think this is probably very few parcels that this is actually going to affect. Um, was the question about uh, so you have this, this, this lot, nine Wilton Road, which is kind of an oddball piece of property. It almost looks like a rear lot. Um, it's got its main access off of uh, Cross Street, but it also fronts on Wilton Ave. And then it also has a, a frontage on Fair Street, which actually has the most frontage on that. So the question was raised by representative of the property owner is, how do they comply with the um, eighty percent minimum buildout? Um, in, in a lot like this, because as you can see, what surrounds the, the site, you know, there's, there are wetlands and there's a river that runs to the south. But there's also um, residential housing basically flanking three sides of the development. So do you want that buildout to occur to the uh, to the street? Do you want that same kind of presence on the street? Or could it possibly be achieved through other means? Um, right now, this property's got a pretty good landscape buffer on those sides that abut the residential and also along the water course. So do you, I think it's probably a good idea to maintain that. Um, in, in, in all scenarios, because if it's abutting the, the water course, then it's providing protection to um, to the water course for um, filtration purposes of runoff before it gets to the, the actual water course. And then it also provides a buffer to these neighboring properties. So you really don't want them to come in and cut the trees down. And then everybody who's, you know, formerly had trees in their backyard is going to end up with, you know, potentially a large building in their backyard. So the um, what we've suggested is that uh, you know, some alternate language be considered where they could apply um, the buildout. I'm sorry, and I'm scrolling, trying to scroll to the recommendation. Uh, this is where they asked the questions. Where we provide that buildout uh, as you know, almost looking at it as civic space, functioning similar to civic space. Um, but basically it's kind of a vegetated buffer and that could count as their frontage verse um, having, having an actual building in that same spot. Hopefully that makes some sense.
But if we go back to the uh, property example, is it, just, just saying it back, is it effectively saying the the bottom counts as that or just the total?
So it could be a couple of different ways. It could be, because the regulations do allow you to front on a water course. Now, this is not like, you know, Norwalk Harbor or where it's really exposed and you'd have that kind of access. But it's also allowing, so if you have taken consideration the, the west side of the property, which um, fronts on Fair Street, so that this technically, this vegetated buffer can count as their frontage piece that if they maintain that and that's considered kind of like a, you know, you could sit, consider it whether it's kind of conserved property and kept, kept in that a natural vegetated state in perpetuity, it can kind of.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
Let me just scroll back down to the language we were talking about. I think the bottom line is a, like I said, I don't think this kind of scenario is going to pop up much at all, but I think what this does in these cases was just gives them some options. So they're not kind of forced to build to something that really doesn't make sense to the neighborhood, gives them just a little more flexibility. And at the same time, provides protection to those uh, residential properties. That's what, that's what we're striving for.
Steve, could this be something that um, could allow for some flexibility with a um, site plan review? I mean, it would seem to me if, if these people came in with an application and the option was to clear cut, so they could be frontage on a road or leave it the way it is and move the building back a little bit, that wouldn't be a difficult decision for me.
Correct. And I think that's exactly what we're looking at. If that, and I think that's kind of what the question the property owner was asking was, you know, I, I don't think they had anything in mind at the moment, but if they look to redevelop in the future, what, what, what are their options? And they don't want to be constrained or they don't, they want, you know, they're looking for some flexibility. And I think the flexibility helps them and also helps the neighbors down the road as well.
I agree.
Yeah, and then another example would um, also be at ten Willard Road, you'll recall, this is the, the property that was redeveloped for the self-storage building and also the new residential units at the rear. Um, you'll recall that these properties over here, there was actually separate properties on, that fronted on uh, Strawberry Hill Ave. Actually, I should say that was in a separate zone. Um, and so kind of the agreement that the commission came up with was, all right, we'll, we'll let you apply the density to the larger site, but we want this area, which I don't know if it's quite an acre, it was a pretty decent sized piece of property. This had to be maintained in a natural state where the trees were maintained, but had to remove the invasive species. Um, this is a similar lot in that their, you know, their access comes in off of Willard, which is more of a commercial strip. But they're, you know, their larger area of uh, frontage is actually on Strawberry Hill. But it's better that the neighbors don't have this extra um, access point coming in and out of Strawberry Hill. It maintains a little more bucolic setting for these folks versus having uh, all the cars entering and exiting off that. So it's just something that I think gives you guys a little more flexibility and provides protection to the, any neighbors that might pop up. And again, I don't think this scenario is going to come up a lot, but it's just for the ones that does, I think this is a kind of a good out for the commission.
Um, Mike here, just a quick question. It, it's unrelated, but I figured since you've got it up there on the photo, I'd ask, do you know if that building is fully occupied? Uh, do, do we have any idea? Do we keep chat tabs on that?
Hmm, I don't know on that particular building. I can probably find out tomorrow for you easy enough.
I have, I have a friend that actually lives in that building, so.
Yeah, yeah, I was just curious because uh, the, it, it always seemed like an odd place for an apartment building, but uh, on the other hand, you could walk to all those stores and uh, now that it's in, I'm just curious how successful it is.
Yeah, I'll, I was emailing. Oh, okay. Yeah, I was just saying, I was talking to the, one of the owners today about another property of theirs. So I can email him tomorrow and just forward that on to you guys.
I assume they have good cell coverage because the cell tower is right in their, right outside their window. So anyway.
That actually is sometimes the, some of the worst places for cell coverage because the signal overshoots it.
Actually, I know the guy who owns that cell tower. He's a client of mine in Yucatan. And uh, it's just an aside. Uh, he couldn't believe they put an apartment building there either, but um, there it is. All right, you can move on. I'm sorry.
No problem. Um, and the last bit that goes with this memo was um, it, within the existing regulations in the S S D D zone, which is basically the South Norwalk area near the train station, and also within the central business district, which um, is West Ave, Wall Street, and some of the side streets off of there. There is requirements for ground floor activation and, and certain areas and certain streets um, that they not just have uh, something like a residential use or a dead use. So they want something active going on. So we've also had a lot of discussions. And again, another example was at the North Seven um, discussion a couple of weeks ago about how much commercial and how much ground floor use is too much and, and the, the fear of not filling spaces versus uh, not requiring. So it's a really kind of fluid discussion and then a really interesting one. So staff is recommending that we um, require that the ground floor activation be, be um, maintained within um, the, the zones on the, what are classified as minor and major arterials as well as the state roads. And I think I sent you out a link to the, that map and Brian's actually working on a new map that will, we can plug in or make it a little cleaner. Um, I can pull that map up as well if that wasn't clear, but I think that makes sense. It doesn't allow it, uh, doesn't require it on the other streets. Uh, so you know, they could choose to do so, I guess, if they want to, but it's not um, on, on the major and the minors as well as the state road, they have to provide that ground floor activations. And I think that provides a nice balance on, uh, making sure we have a mix of uses, um, active street fronts, uh, you know, paid places for people to congregate, et cetera.
Steve, in the second sentence there, staff's recommendation is to not allow small multifamily or large multifamily buildings on minor and major art, arterials arterials or state roads? What the, am I misunderstanding that?
So that's a building type. So that's not saying you can't do residential on those. So all the, the other building types, there's a, and I can, if you want, so there's a mixed-use building type.
If we can, that'd be great.
Yeah, those all allow, um, let me do that. It's just going to take me a second to switch. I'll try to talk while I do at the same time. Um, all those building types allow um, the mixed-use environment in there. So let me see if I can get to that. Just to show you, so you're clear.
Looking for the building types?
Yeah, I'm just kind of scrolling to that unless you can beat me to it.
Yeah, I felt like that contradicted itself, what you were saying there.
Yeah, it's, it's the building type. It's not um, here we go.
I'd have pulled up Steve if you.
Yeah, thanks. So this is the large multifamily building. So that's, that's strictly a residential building. Brian, can you scroll down to the um, mid-rise or the mixed-use? So that's a mixed-use building. That's, you know, a lower scale, but there's also a mid-rise building. Um, yeah, there you go. That's a good example. So the mid-rise is kind of a lot, like a lot of the products that we approve already, uh, if you think about like Chestnut Street. So it's got ground floor, commercial and the residential or it could be other uses above. So it's not, not precluding it, but it's just saying you can't solely do a residential building on those major or minor arterials.
And if it had the townhome element to it, does that count or not count for its street activation?
This townhome would. So that, that's also, Brian, you could maybe scroll up. So the townhome is allowed in those zones. I think it's coming, yeah. Is allowed in those zones, I think it's coming, yeah.
Could you show us? So the two types of buildings that were listed in that sentence that was confusing. You're saying that those two building types would not be allowed. Can you show us those two building types?
Yep, here's one of them, that's the small multifamily. And then the large is just bigger version.
Okay, so these are building types, building types that don't. Include commercial. Would not be allowed. Because they want there to be commercial. That makes more sense, sort of.
Yeah, it's it's it is confusing, a bunch of people asked me about that, but I said it's just the building typology, that's all it is.
Can we bring up the arterial map?
Yeah, I have that.
You got that too bad?
I'm only just curious, like, I'm super worried, Steve, about the storefronts. Being empty, they're all around the city empty.
So so for this map, really, so the only relevant areas is so that yellow. Pink and black are the the streets where it would apply to, and then really what we're just looking at is the the purple zone. Which is the CD five.
Only within CD five, okay.
Yeah, so Nick, all these properties now, for the most part, they are, they, most of them have commercial on the ground floor now anyway. So it's not, it's not introducing an additional requirement for those.
I didn't realize it was only in CD five.
What about up at Merit Seven?
Yeah, that that will get to that one as well.
Yeah, that, I mean, and that retail up there is. Not happening, really.
Well, there's some retail in that building, it's just different.
So I just, I have a concern, I mean, this is, this is just a personal concern, that you have this concentration. Of new buildings going up, requiring that they have retail at the bottom. And someone else had mentioned the, you know, if there's a downturn in the economy, you have all these empty storefronts. Like, like, what's the plan B? You know, are you now going to switch gears and say, oh, now you can, you can redevelop this office space or this commercial space is residential space? Is it going to be flexible and fluid?
So the, so the way it's recommended at the moment is it. Has to be some kind of commercial use on the ground floor. And again, it's on those. The streets that are highlighted there with the yellow and the pink within the, and that's really focusing on South Norwalk at the moment, so. Within the purple area labeled CD five, where those pink or yellow streets intersect. That's where they would have to have a ground floor commercial. And by and large, I think. Pretty much everywhere does now, except for maybe a couple of different spots along, maybe on Water Street, but everything on South Main does. So I I don't think it's going to pop up as as much of an issue.
Oh, go ahead, Diana.
No, 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 you finish it up.
Right, um, okay, but that doesn't really answer the question in regards to, you know. Is this, if this is going to be a requirement, then is there also going to be? Um, some sort of. I guess, you know, option. For when there are not enough build, enough commercial retail use. That is going to occupy all the floors, I mean, I mean, the 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 ground floor of all these buildings. Is the city now going to revert back to residential space? Is there going to be some sort of clause? In this that says this is going to be allowable?
So so if it ever got to a point in time where it was a problem, that's when we could address it, I mean, so.
As if you have this issue on Water Street?
I don't think so. The zoning regulations right now for South Norwalk in that purple area. And same with the further north up on Wall Street, they already require this now, so it's not a new requirement, it's. Keeping the requirement consistent with what we have today. But they could achieve that. By using townhouses, which was something you guys approved for the building on. At the former YMCA site, so they can, they can, they can achieve it through residential, they just can't do that specific building type on that. On those two streets.
But can we have that wording in there that would encourage? And give them that option?
It's already there, so they they they, it's already, that building typology is already allowed. Or it allowed in the draft regulations, I should say. So what what typically happens, so I'll give you an example of how things typically unfold, so. With the YMCA site, before they even submitted the application, they came in and talked to. Uh, P and Z staff, redevelopment staff, as well as T and P and I think DPW. And they were talking about what what, you know, what we think would work on the site, what doesn't work. Um, and we, and it was our staff that recommended going with the townhouses. Along there to provide activation as opposed to getting, they had the same concern, like, you know, we're going to have a difficult time. Trying to fill up, if you're going to tell us you need to put commercial space all along West Avenue, we're going to have a tough time doing that. And we recognized that and said, all right, well, what about doing something at the corner with like, you know. Like food, something food related, which they said, yeah, we should be able to do that, but then we. Added the townhomes to provide that kind of different level of activation, which is just a nice aesthetic. And also. With the Chestnut Street application, they approved that along. Uh, which street was that? Not on Chestnut, but on the side street, Henry. Same thing.
Right, I also, so thank you so much for shedding a light on that, explaining it further. I just didn't want South Norwalk to be an area where. There's this like this concentration of empty storefronts, I mean, you know, for the. I mean, in in the event of a downturn in the economy, I just don't want it to be, you know. This corridor of empty storefronts or a failed. You know, venture, we're trying to bring vitality to the neighborhood. We're trying to bring new people to the neighborhood, trying to bring tax dollars to the neighborhood, but in the event that things go south. I don't want this to be obliterated where all of our hard work has been blown up.
Yeah, that's a great point, yeah. And and something we did when the East Norwalk zoning regs were redone was. We we stopped looking at how big. How like how deep the storefront was and started just focusing on where they actually added the commercial. Because sometimes they would just develop, like the first iteration of. Waypoint had a lot of commercial and it was very deep into the development. And that would, you know, then, you know, COVID hit and everything like that kind of flipped. So now we're like, we really don't care how deep it is, it just want to have. That street presence, so they can kind of have flexibility on what kind of space they put in there.
Well, thank you for that. Okay, so now I further understand, I appreciate it.
Is there any, I know this is slight hinge, but is there anything that? We or other parts of the city can do to prevent. Owners with retail, ground floor retail from leaving things vacant, not because there's a downturn in the economy, but. You know, for many, many years for no discernible reason.
It was, I have to. Yeah, that's.
Vacancy tax? Is that something that Norwalk has?
No, I don't think so.
Okay, and that's something that the common council would have to be dealing with?
That's something we got to figure out the right answer to your question to, I don't know.
Okay, thank you.
That, uh, excuse me, Anna, that was such a good question because. That property on Ludlow Square, you know, right? Opposite One Cemetery Street on the other end.
Right by my house, the property.
And it is such an eyesore, and it is sitting there with a chain link fence around it. And I'm like, is there anything the city can do to penalize this guy because it's blight? It's just blight, it's just sitting there blighted and it is a, it drags down the entire neighborhood. I mean, I was hoping that the residents of One Cemetery Street would provide impetus to rent it out, but it seems like the owner doesn't have any interest. In renting it, I'm not sure what's going on, but. It it ought to be, that's a great case for eminent domain, I mean, it's just awful because there's a senior center right across the street. People that live there used to have services, you know, the businesses there, that there was a Chinese restaurant, there was a florist. Uh, there, I I forget what else was there, cleaners.
Cumberland Farms.
Yeah, and it and it was vibrant and it was like, it added to the walkable, walkable nature of that neighborhood. And it should not be allowed that somebody can just sit there with five, I think there's seven or eight stores. And for no reason anybody can think of, it's just sitting there unrented, uh, and. I mean, it really is a, it's a. You know, I don't want to get in trouble, but. It should not be allowed to happen, that's all I can say, it just should not be allowed to happen. And um. And I think a vacancy tax would be something we really ought to look into. I do, I do recall. The discussion of of in other towns with a lot of this vacant retail. That 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 is something that they're considering or that is already in force in some places, but. I, it just breaks my heart every time I drive by there. And it 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 seems like, you know, what? It just goes against everything that Norwalk is about, is that some private property owner could take a piece of. Land on a square. The next to a senior center near a train station and just leave it vacant like that, should not be allowed. And I, anyway, I'm not going to be on this commission much longer, but. I hope that my words ring in some ears, you know, maybe at the common council. Or or the ordinance committee or whatever in in regards to this. And and while I have the floor, I just want to say one more thing that. The, we were just talking about the YMCA property and. Uh, and the amount of retail around waypoint that was sitting vacant or is sitting vacant. Uh, I brought this up before, but it's important to know that Bell Point Capital had brought in experts. Uh, you years ago, it was just in in one of the hearings and I had asked a question about. Uh, the vacant retail when we were approving, it was probably the. What's the name of the pinnacle? And they said that all their retail analysis had been that there needed to be a critical mass of residents. A certain number of apartments to support the investment that retailers were going to make. Uh, and that it hadn't achieved that yet, and I'm, and that once the pinnacle was constructed. And occupied, that critical mass would be achieved, and so all of that retail. Uh, around waypoint should have that critical mass of residents and including the YMCA property across the street. So there's an upside to that density in that it would provide. The the impetus for that retail to be activated. Uh, and that's, that's actually a pretty important thing because there's a lot, there's buildings across America that are built where they, these. You know, the town required retail, but in the, in a multi-use building. And but there's not that critical mass of residents to support that retail, so it just sits there empty, of course, makes the streets more dangerous. Because you're walking by dark storefronts at night, you know, and et cetera, so I just. Wanted to make those two points.
Can we make a formal recommendation to ask them to look at a vacancy tax?
Say, I have a question, what would the possible benefit be? I don't, I don't get it. You know, that build that. That group of buildings across from Cemetery Streets, somebody's paying taxes on that, so there are carrying costs. To maintaining that property, what is the benefit to the landlord to holding that property vacant?
Well, Galen, like I think on over on Belden by the bus loop, there's that office building there that I think is vacant other than. The towers, the cell towers or the things on the roof that the lease is so, those. Are rented out or the rights of those things are valuable, more valuable than trying to renovate the building. I know it's not the same for the East Norwalk place, but it's interesting that there's sometimes other things at play. Again, that may be another place that, you know, the vacancy tax is a thing of consideration because it's not really, it's a dead zone there.
Same thing with the property on Water Street that we've all been talking about with the waterfront zone.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I have to jump out of the meeting now. But for what it's worth, I'm in favor of the first three things we discussed.
Thanks, Richard, see you next week. All right, Steve, can we move along? Sure, and I I. I apologize, I sent out two memos late today, so I. I imagine folks didn't have a chance to get through those, I can pop them up, one of them is really simple and one of them's. Still pretty simple, but not as simple. That makes sense.
It's medium simple.
So we had another. Sorry, my cat's here, we had another. Attorney reach out to us regarding Shore and Country Club. And they had concerns that about. Some activities that they do currently that. Would technically not be allowed in the new regulation, so and we did a little research and it seems like these are pretty common across all the. Waterfront clubs, and that boils down to that, you know, they do have live music at these, at these venues. They do have weddings, they have outdoor dining on patios, and in the winter time, they do store, store boats at these facilities. And those are all accessory uses to the the principal use, so staff was going to recommend that we allow those. Just just basically write them into the definition, so that way we were, you know, it's it's clear that these are. Part and parcel to the use, so that that's, that's kind of in a nutshell. I think what happened with, I was looking at the. The edits table today, it's just kind of staring at it for a while, and I think a couple of things kind of popped out. One, the first one I talked about earlier was that there's these, a lot of nuanced changes with the. The form-based code and matching it up to kind of what our existing code is and and the built environment that we have in in areas like South Norwalk and. The Wall Street and West Ave areas, and then the second part is we have. The, there's a lot of questions and changes to the use table, and I think kind of, you know, that kind of fell into three categories, the first one being. Right now, our existing regulations don't define anything or define very few things where the new regulations define everything. Um, so there's all these different uses that are now sometimes in the regu, the new regulations that aren't. In the right spots or were missed as part of, you know, matching them up to existing uses on the ground, so I think that's kind of where. All these little corrections are coming from, so I, that's kind of just a little bit.
Steve, looking at this one. Should we not include, you have it in in at least two places, but jumping to the very bottom. Uh, regardless of race, creed, shouldn't it be color? Or sexual orientation?
We can certainly add that, that I think is probably taken exactly from the existing definition, but that's. That's, that is, I think, I have zero objection to that, it's fine.
I'm like. Is there any way it could be? I don't have the language to match it, but just matching whatever the protected civil rights categories are. Today, which I think is a lot more expansive or referencing without regard to. XYZ protected civil rights groups.
Yeah, if it's okay with you guys, we can go and if there's like. Standard language that we could just post across there that would cover all those groups up, we'll, we'll put that in.
That would be fun.
Yeah, creed seems. Who uses that word anymore? It's age, I I know age, uh, phys, ability. Physical ability, gender. Sex- sexual orientation, anyway, there's a, there's a whole list, thank, that's a, that's a good request, Anna. Because it does.
I don't want to be picky, but it's just driving.
No, I know. Ethnicity is the other word that covers. That that covers expanded rights, ethnicity. Race, ethnicity, sexual orientation, age, physical ability.
The staff can just look it up, right?
Check with the legal department so we don't.
I was just gonna say, Taisha in the law department is an expert on this, so.
Okay, then then let's move, let's keep moving.
All right, we'll see how we do with this one, hold on one sec. This one is specific to the hospital. This one is specific to the hospital. Um hospital, as you know, has their own zone in the current regulations and in the draft. And very similarly, there are a lot of things that the hospital does. Um that I think everybody understands that that's part of what happens in a hospital, especially a bigger hospital where they have like. You know, they might have a restaurant or two or cafe, they have um. You know, chapels or other areas within church where people can go and pray. They have. Lecture rooms, auditoriums, classrooms, they have um administrative offices. They um, you know, might have a daycare facility within there. You know, there's all these different things that occur in the hospital that um. I I think are part and parcel for the hospital, but the hospital just wanted to make sure it was clarified whether some of these uses were um. Could be considered accessory uses and included. Some of them are contained within the definition um. Et cetera. And again, I know this one got sent out late, so if you haven't had a chance to go through it, I'd figure at the very least we could introduce it and then. Um come back and discuss it next time unless you wanted to take the time and 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 go through it in detail now.
I see warehouses is one of the items uh identified in here and I I I did not have a chance to read this before the meeting tonight. What is the the context for for warehouses in here?
I I think that one is kind of probably not necessary, but they do store things, you know, the hospital has has to keep. Certain things on on.
Sure.
On site, you know, in case there's an emergency or there's a shutdown or there's a pandemic or something like that. They have to have a certain amount of supplies to handle. You know. In climate weather and so forth. So they do have warehousing even though it's not. A warehouse.
Okay.
And they do also do um fabrication of limbs of prosthetics and certain things so that, you know. Technically, I think that's part and parcel of what the hospital does, but again, if you don't want to limit them or. Have them be worried that they're going to become some kind of non-conforming situation by not. Being specific or clarifying what's included and what's not. I'll just jump down. Now, that's the last piece of it. So again, I I I'm getting, I'm sorry I sent this out late, so we we don't have to make any. Decisions on this tonight, but just figured at the very least we could introduce it and go through it and then, you know, if you want to. Take up more formal. Action on it at the next meeting, that's fine as well. I'm happy to get you guys out of here by eight o'clock too.
Okay, is that everything you have for us this evening, Steve?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Then the next item is the approval of the minutes of September twenty seventh. Can I have a motion, please? Those were included in the materials that were sent out?
I'll move to approve.
Okay, uh Chapin has moved. Can I have a second? Someone raise a hand, please. Thank you, Nick. Um are there any questions, uh corrections, changes in the minutes? All right, if not, by show of hands, all those in favor.
I abstained, Lou, because I was not there.
Right, it's it's otherwise unanimous. Uh comments of director, Steve?
Nothing further.
Okay, comments of commissioners, um but go go ahead, Derek.
Was okay, there was no, there might be one other set of minutes we have to approve.
Think there is October.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you for that. The October fourth minutes. And that is a motion to approve, Darius?
Yes.
Uh second. Uh Tammy has uh seconded again, all those in favor with show of hands.
I have to abstain.
Yeah, I have to abstain as well.
Okay, so uh uh. The exception of uh Darius and Chapin who have abstained because they were unable to attend.
And then I I do have one amendment to make in my building. Just uh there's a. A blank space after Catherine on the October fourth. A minute, so I just wanted to. Let Diana know that it's Cap.
Okay, uh let's see that that change gets.
I'm sorry, what was her name again?
Catherine Price Snedeker, P R I C E hyphen S N E. Uh Sned- E D A K E R.
Thank you.
Yeah, S N A E, I think.
Ned, S M E.
Let's. Proper spelling. Um we have. Next week, October twenty fifth. We're getting um quite close uh to. Um completing the work on uh the new regulations. Um. I think um I would uh like to. Uh be able to hold our public hearing um as early in December. Uh as possible. Um so that we have this completed before the new year, before we we lose um. Um uh the folks who are scheduled to go off the commission. Uh and have to deal with with uh new new commissioners. Um I also have suggested to uh the staff. That uh prior to the public uh hearing itself. That um we hold a meeting. At which uh the staff will do its best. Uh to summarize. Um what uh the changes in the new regulations are. Um as a way of getting out um information to the public on what we'll be voting. On uh at the public hearing itself. Uh but keeping in mind that I'd like to accomplish this in uh December, which I think. Uh I I feel is reasonable and the commissioners feel. And the, I'm sorry, the staff feels uh is reasonable. It may be necessary. And we should do this sooner rather than later. To extend as necessary some of our special meetings. That uh are supposed to end at eight o'clock. Uh and perhaps run them to eight thirty or maybe even. Uh nine o'clock. To get our work done. Uh because after this is finished, these meetings are over. Um and I I think we all would like to complete this work. As quickly as uh possible, keeping in mind that uh. We want to make sure we do it right. There will be. Uh some issues which won't be fully resolved. Uh you know, the city has undertaken a study. Of affordable housing, which won't be completed uh until the spring. Um so we may not fully be able to address the issues, all of the issues. Uh de- dealing with that uh until later in the new year. Um and there may be a few other. Uh issues like that. But by and large, um I'd like to see if uh see us if at all possible. Um as I said, vote on this. Early in December and early enough. So that it doesn't interfere with anybody's holidays.
For Lou, are we looking to do, I think all that makes a ton of sense in my perspective. Are we looking to do like a? Almost like capital budget style? That week of whenever we like run public hearing or is it one or two public hearings right back to back and vote in like one week? Versus uh extending it over multiple weeks?
I think we do one public hearing. If there are, uh keep in mind, I think. That a lot of. Um the hostility, a lot of the people who wish to speak. I- in the past. We've moved, we should have moved past that since we've eliminated. Um um such a large volume of the upzoning. So I'm hoping we can do this in one public hearing. If there are so many people who want to speak that we can't. Um in one meeting, we'll extend the hearing to a second. Um evening. But I I don't, I don't see uh any rationale for drawing it out. Longer than is necessary for us. To one, get the information out to the community and two. Hear, hear what the community has to say. Now, that may mean. Uh holding a public hearing, listening to them and then not voting. Uh until the next meeting. Um we'll.
I guess like. I- in that vein, though, would it make, just something to consider is if we want to notice two days. Like a Thursday, whatever, a Tuesday, Wednesday, Wednesday, Thursday, back to back. So it's just a continuation of a conversation versus the. You know, if the next meeting is going to be a week out, you have to note, you know, if we think about that ahead of time, we could. Move through that. In a bit of a consolidated block versus what may just be a elongated process at the end.
Let's, let's talk about that when we get just a little bit closer.
Yeah, totally.
Maybe uh uh early to mid-November. Uh we should, we should be talking about that.
And is the staff comment uh or overview, is that something that's going to be like a Q and A with the public or just a Q and A with? Commissioners that's going to be blasted out? What was your thoughts on that?
I I think if we make it a Q and A with the public, it's essentially a public hearing. Um and uh I don't, I don't think the staff. Will be able to present as clear. Um um an explanation of what's going on. I I I think if, you know, there's constant. And I I I don't mean this in a negative way. But if there's constant sort of interruption with with um uh questions from the public. Um I think there's going to be a lot more confusion than if they're just, the staff is just able to. Uh explain it. Questions can certainly be asked at the public hearing. Staff will be there to respond to those questions as part of the public hearing process.
But then it's something we should try to think about publicizing as well versus like it's going to be a big agenda item to listen to, no, no questions at that time or something like that.
Absolutely, I think. That'll have to wait till after the election because.
Totally, yeah.
Election is 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 itself going to engender so much. Public noise. Uh that we want to, we 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 want to give it a a chance for that noise to die down so that people can actually hear what we have to say.
Uh quick question on the um affordability study, for example. Is that something where when that study is complete, we're able to bring um? Maybe like an amendment to uh to the zoning, like open up an application to address things based on the findings of that study?
I think that's what the staff had in mind.
Great, okay.
And as you know, we we also, we have um. Uh Nick uh serving on that committee. I've forgotten, is JJ also on that committee?
I think Anna.
Anna is.
Okay, so I, we already have uh two members of the commission. Um who will will be able to add their voices to that conversation in a in a meaningful way.
Wonderful.
I can also. Guarantee you that probably six months into the new regulations, we're going to have to change some stuff because something is just not going to work. So I. I hate to tell you, but there's going to be, we'll probably have some more revisions to make. Couple of different times down the road until we get all the.
I think that's the nature of an undertaking like this. And and frankly, I've already alerted the mayor to that. You know, to the fact that this is going to be the best document that we can present. But it can't possibly be an absolutely perfect document. There's got to be something we missed or something we've. We we haven't articulated as well as we might have. Um so that uh there will be uh some changes. And if he's, if he's the mayor going forward. Uh you know, he said he understands that. Um, anything else? If not, Steve was very close to his goal. It's eight oh eight.
Yeah, one, one other um. Public service announcement, I think it's this Friday, is that walk, uh walkabout, Free Park, Wall Street area. If anybody wants to attend, I, four o'clock.
I wa- I I I'd like to share my feelings about that. Um, this is a group, and 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 this is just my opinion. Um, take it for what it's worth. But. This is a group that wants to i- impose uh zoning requirements. Um on uh every municipality in the state. Um, my feeling is that while what we do isn't perfect. We have more than met. Um or and and which isn't to say we can't do more and shouldn't do more. But we have more than met. Uh the requirements of uh uh state regulation as they currently stand. And I don't think it's fair to impose on us. Um. What is essentially uh state zoning regulation? Um when we are essentially one of the good guys. Um. I, excuse me. I I think it's not inappropriate to apply it to those communities. That have fought affordable housing. Every, every community that surrounds us. Uh you know, uh Westport, Darien, Wilt.
Two and three, two and three and four percent. While we're at fourteen.
Exactly, and and m- most other. Um uh suburban uh communities in the state. Um. But I don't uh uh support imposing. Um additional strictures on us. Um. And uh so I I'm not going to be attending on Friday. Um. And um. I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't support the way in which this group is going about. Um um. Enforcing their mission. I mean, I think they're well-intended. Um, but um I I I think they ought to. Uh ease off on those communities that um clearly. Uh have made more than a good faith effort. That's just my opinion.
Well, perhaps they were going to tell us that we were a good example.
Yeah, which they have.
I'm going to try to make it, but I, yeah, they're they're about a lot of things.
Yeah.
Not not just that, I mean, that's the the kind of mechanism they. Support. Because there's so much pushback around the state. Uh. And we have the highest rate of. Uh of unaffordable. Uh what, I forget the, what is the uh phrase that's used, Alice? You know, asset limited, income. Constrained. Uh isn't that a, uh it, what does Alice mean? Does anybody know? But anyway, that that we have the highest rate. In history uh in the state of Connecticut of people who. Can barely afford to live here. I mean, they're they're they just can't. It's it's, those are the people that. Will not buy groceries because they're being so squeezed. So, you know, it's a noble. Cause and I I I'm open-minded to it, but I also. Have some sympathy for your position, Lou. Uh I mean.
What I would, what I would say is, um, you know, if one of you. Wants to talk about the experience at our next meeting. Um, let's, let's do that under comments of the commissioners. Um I don't want to have a full-blown conversation, but if you think um. Uh helpful information came, comes out of, out of that walkthrough. Then uh please share it with us next Wednesday.
I would say just uh keep an eye on the weather too, because I saw some emails that they were concerned about um. The amount of rain we might get at that time and they might have to rethink things, so just keep an eye out.
Okay. All right, any other uh comments from commissioners?
Well, uh just one, you know, I don't know what other commissioners think about this, but you know, I've noticed a proliferation of alcohol store. Liquor stores and vape shops around here in our city and. I was just wanting to start the dialogue on what uh our commission and staff thinks about that and. Whether or not it's something we should look into.
Uh Steve, you want to uh have the staff prepared to say a few words about that again at uh our meeting next Wednesday?
Yeah, we can do some research.
Okay, good.
Maybe we can meet over cocktails and discuss it. I'm just kidding, that was a.
That's really active party.
But let's wait, let's wait until we uh.
I did read somewhere. I did read somewhere that Norwalk has more bars per capita or liquor stores per capita. Than any other city in Connecticut, I, or maybe New England, I, but I. Remember that from years ago and it stuck in my head. You know, we have one, I, yeah, we we're surrounded by them in our neighborhood.
Can I have a motion to adjourn, please? Darius has moved, Anna and and JJ have seconded. All those in favor. We are adjourned, see you next Wednesday.
Good night.
Good night.